Community Motors West Side, the GM Superstore next to Cinema West. Community Motors of Mason City, we give you more.
We'll call meeting order, we do have a forum here, one directive missing, there are few actuarial commitments, but we will, first item, ask for approval of the agenda, there is one addendum in your red folder. And second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? During the passes. Minutes, there are two sets of minutes, the being on 12:12 and then also the special meeting we called on 1:09, new action items. Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve?
Uh huh.
And second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions or anything you'd like to add as well?
I just need to add one that we just will add, it will be added in the paper so you don't have this one, it's to Nancy Lloyd for $900, she does the concessions management and we're supposed to take, pay her at the day for a meeting and so we got it ready to go now. That's the only change I have against anybody else's questions.
The amendment will go to the secretaries report.
I want to turn to your cash flow statement for December and see that for revenues in general we get 2.3 million, expenses of 2.8 million, so the income balance is right around 11 million in operating funds. Management fund we're at 2.5 million, capital at 3.8 million, student activity at 176,000, capital projects 25 million, and you can see where we transferred somebody out in capital projects and that would have gone to debt service for our principal and interest payment. And then if you go to food service, you can see we're at 673,000, health dental 4.5 million, scholarship 93,000, agency and folks benefits is 76,000, and debt service is 3.1 million. And then also you can see that the interest rates are still hanging right in there at the highest is 0.5 percent and then it goes down. We have transferred some money from Farmers State Bank where, which has the 2 million QSCB so that we could meet our commitment, we had to have concessions done within six months, so we did transfer that money back to First Citizens. Next one, I hope to give you an accounting of all the money and what has been and what we have left in each of the revenue bonds and the QSCBs so that you have a feel for where we're at. Then we'll also should know where we're at with the high school two story because I believe that's most of it up February 8th.
February 8th.
So we'll have more information there so I can give you a better update a little about financially. Any questions on any of the financial statements?
Thank you. Dates of calendar, we will add February 8th and the fifteenth to those dates on the calendar. Any additional dates to add to our calendar for the coming up here?
Actually, there's one on the 31st which I'll talk about during my report, it's a request from the county department and we'll see what that's, the waiver for ESEA and their assets being put from all over the state and so AEA 267 has set up a polygon for us on debt on the 31st, so we'll give you all that schedule stuff later.
And end of semester, holidays, all kinds of stuff coming up. Any questions on those or maybe else? Okay, then we'll go to open forum, do you have any requests for open forum?
I am not receiving.
And on to the action items. First action item is personnel report, BEM 46.
Thank you President Becker, I'm bringing forward tonight for your consideration of approval, new hires for certified personnel, Keith Ruder who is teaching fourth grade at Roosevelt Elementary. New hires for classified personnel, June Black for John Adams 7. Lisa Bohach is a new secretary at Mason City High School. And Ross Piersma is a certified paraprofessional Roosevelt Elementary. New hires supplemental, Joel Squires head varsity boys soccer. And Nick Trask assistant boys varsity soccer. Those are for your consideration of approval.
Questions or comments?
Just a question in general, Hal, since the fiscal year started, how are we doing on staffing overall? Seems like we've had a lot of new hires the last, well, some months. Last month we had quite a few. What kind of work should be, are we short on staffs or?
And Hal's really been working on that, I think one of the things that's important is that we've had some families move here with some very needy children who require special education services, I do have to provide these services and that's where several of the additions of paraprofessionals have occurred because we have to meet the educational and personal social needs of those students, so that's kind of where we are.
This teacher here is a replacement teacher for staff members who needed to be compromised.
Okay, is there a motion for approval? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. First number 42. Action item 84 is Mason City Mohawk trademark usage approval, BEM 47. I approve this.
We have not done this before, we're getting, and Ramona's worked with Bob Kenny and TJ and even way on who lives, so we're going to weigh in on this as well. This is something that's happening, I think, all over is that, for instance, other entities are wanting to sell Mohawk wear and use our logo without permission and then they make money on it and so this is a way for us to prepare our logo and have it registered.
And we checked out with Kristy Latta, attorney of managers, and she said this is a standard, schools do this, it's okay for us to do it as long as the board president signed me a rate.
What exactly is our mascot?
Well, we are called the Mohawks.
I know that.
We do not have a mascot.
Okay.
Isn't it just the capital letters MC?
Yeah, so it's just the capital letters MC. But the mascot language is in there because some people, some communities do have a mascot but we do not.
How many different logos do we actually have? I mean, you know, we have the Mohawks with the arrow all the way through it, we have the MC, we have, I mean, I still got the head.
The Mohawk with the arrow is really the official as well as the MC is really probably the official.
Actually, we pretty much use the two, it's either with the arrow, like the football helmet has the arrow, or the MC with an arrow, or just the MC, the big MC is pretty much what we've been using.
So the Indians, we never did have a channel.
Left with our arrow.
Okay.
And it does say that our own groups, maybe it's out, right, if it goes to group and things like that.
Right, it's really for outside companies who are marketing to us saying, we'll be glad to, you know, make shirts for you and put your logo on them and sell them, but then there's really nothing that's a benefit to us.
Well, I think in the last year we've had different vendors have wanted to use our logo, like on checks, you know, the banks and that, so things like that, which we have never given anybody permission to do that.
So like you go to Drug Town or Mason City, or excuse me, ID Drug, and we're not getting any of that action out?
No. ID supports us in a lot of different ways.
Yes.
They give us free things.
We've been contacted by the banks, actually.
Walmart.
Walmart, Walgreens, actually it's contacted, actually it's for about the last three years. Several other stores basically wanting to sell Mohawk gear or make Mohawk gear for our community.
Give any estimate on what we would generate with this in the future?
No, it's more of a protection, I mean, it doesn't prevent them from printing something with Mason City Mohawks on it, it really doesn't, it just prevents them from using the logos that we have, said are our logos.
Any questions? Motion to approve, some more. And the second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Item 85 is district mileage reimbursement rate raise. Current rate is 34 cents per mile, and that goes to 41 cents per mile. Questions? The federal rate is at 41, that's quite a lot.
Right, and we have not raised it.
Actually, I think because on federal rates.
It's higher than that, yeah. 54 cents.
I think it was 51 and it reached to 54, so we were pretty low and wanted to know if we did that return to the century started with. And we make it retroactive that to January 1st, we're going to share with that for 2012.
Who approves? And the second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? And we made this 41 cents. And we sent the out of town overnight trip request, BEM 48, from the Senate to send up to the public EAD conference, move Chicago.
This is a really great opportunity, I'm glad to see students attending this and being and taking this kind of leadership, so I'm excited for this. It's a wonderful opportunity for them to meet with other students senate, young people from all over, all over the nation and probably all over the world. Are there people from other places Laura, other than the United States that come to this?
I don't think so. This one I don't think is international, some of the opportunities that Kyle will have a chance to go to over the next couple of years may be international that students attend. Notice I say Kyle because I don't think I'm going to make it to those, but Kyle will be there. We go.
I want to point out with this, kind of, we're asking Kyle who's on the state board now for student senate.
I am too.
Yes, and Laura, but we're looking at taking a few students, actually freshmen and sophomore students, to this to kind of start building on their leadership capacity for the high school, so that way as they become juniors and seniors, they've had some training and now we're kind of through a cycle, we're cycling leaders and preparing the school to keep maintaining our climate and culture, so.
I've got juniors and seniors pouting.
Yes. So we had an opportunity, some open spots besides Kyle, and so we, that's why we wanted to take a few more students.
Motion to approve? And the second?
Second.
Any additional questions or comments?
We expect a full report and then return from the seat.
I will send those students, yes. I expect a full report from them as well.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Next up is the addendum, item 86A, which is the reinstatement of economics for it that raises to the high, based on the Iowa core curriculum.
As you remember, we have removed that, we remove that as a requirement for graduation as we move through the Iowa core, the financial literacy piece is a key component of, and an expectation for every student that graduates. We know we have some financial literacy pieces embedded throughout the curriculum, other places where students might get some initial information about that, but nothing where every student would be required to take something that would have a financial literacy component to it, and so we're asking you to reinstate economics as a graduation requirement that will be effective this following year.
Questions or comments?
Do you have something already to teach yet?
We have someone teaching it right now, we've been, yes, it's been unelected and we do have someone that's qualified and sort of, and TJ's already been working with that for some reason.
We also have an adjunct professor here at the table.
Some rules.
And the second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have econ requirement back. Item 87 is BEM 49, student private school permits.
This is pretty standard.
And the questions or comments? If not, motion to approve. And the second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have econ requirement back. Item 87 is BEM 49, student private school permits.
This is pretty standard.
And the questions or comments? If not, motion to approve. And the second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have the areas, thank you. That concludes the action items, next up is announcements, board report, committee report, standing correspondence, we'll start with the communications committee.
We haven't had any meetings since our last board meeting, but we do have an updated version of the preschool, I think this was the second week in January, the preschool information went back on Channel 4 with the dates taken out from the earlier sessions, so that's still running right now. That's the only other thing we.
Facility steering?
That would be me, and last Monday, we met with Terry Parkey right there, and they talked about changes as far as access to parking lot. I just talked to TJ, we're proceeding, it looks like we'll be in the 23rd, is that what you're talking?
Yeah.
You know, with all likelihood, there's been areas of frustration that have been communicated, and he has just communicated, and I'll be out Wednesday at nine o'clock, and, but, we're moving along, not as quickly as we'd like to, but we're moving along, and there's been a little bit of frustration with performance, I believe, but we're going to get it done.
I just want to add too, I sat in with TJ as part of my work, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, for a whole afternoon of meetings with Marson Hinkle and.
Holland.
Holland. And first of all, the people at Story are doing a great job, I mean, it's clear they're really on top of things, they ask tough questions, they've got, they know the project in and out, and what I was really impressed by is that they really are working with all the subs and, I mean, the subs really seem to know where their place is, what their next step is, when they need to show up, what they got to get done, you know, they just seen, everybody seems to be on the same page, and this is not an easy project with all the stuff that's going on, the weather has been a huge help obviously because the peanut thing looks like it's really moving because of as well the Hinkle people, you know, they're moving along too, so they seem to be, they're going to sit in the same room together without problems, so, but, I guess the Story people are really, Terry did a nice job too, they were just doing things along, so just, trying to stop calling this, really working this, kind of turned out walk through with TJ, they were obviously quite done yet, but a lot of the stuff was in there, they were looking at the neighbors in the kitchen side and through.
On the 30th of this month, we'll have that combined meeting with Diethead Avenue and facilities committee and students, and we'll invite, anybody else see that, we invite a transition monitoring team also to listen, so we'll do a, we'll walk through the kitchen so that everybody can see that, take a look at that, and we'll be after, well, we're hoping it'll be after we're in there, but we'll hope for the 20th.
Another comment that I'd like to make in terms of Mr. Jumper, he's been doing his own work, not only being a principal of high school, but having to be a ran lot in terms of construction, and it's got to be tough, I think he's doing a real good job, so.
And what are we serving up the person?
Actually, I don't know, I did make it a point to talk with our kitchen manager to make sure that it's something we will all enjoy. Yes, and it's, basically I sent the message, it has to be perfect, coming in, so.
Chicken tortilla soup isn't too bad.
She's on it, she, she said that she will, she wants it to be something that's very inviting and I think that although maybe not all the bells and whistles will be there by the end of the year, I think they'll see some big changes and what that whole environment's going to be about. I'll show you some pictures of some possible seating types and things like that as well.
Other reasons to move?
The Renaissance event again is March 31st, we've been meeting to kind of finalize some things, the food will be similar to what it was last year, we're talking with Dale Shirts at ID, and are tweaking a few things, the cost will be $20 a person, we will have the sponsored tables again with a total limit of 300 people. Entertainment will be similar to what it was last year, Shakespeare, but different this time, there will be magical singers but not in costume necessarily this year because I believe their costumes are now in storage.
You're literally.
Yeah, so, so, so few differences, and Worldport has graciously agreed to perform again for the evening, which is fabulous, and the art show will again precede the event, so that will be nice to see all of the artwork like we got to last time, and we are meeting again January 24th.
Thank you for all your time.
Technology's too. We meet next week, so there's really not a lot to record other than hopefully John Adams 7 has noticed a little difference with.
I had comments made this afternoon, your staff.
Good, so finally got that up and running, what we did is we brought in, MediaCom brought in a modem, and then we reconfigured our router to come back here to do the authentication for students and staff, and then if a student or a staff member needs to go to the internet, it automatically goes right straight to MediaCom, which is right there, so hopefully it's, it's faster than what it was.
Noticeable.
When's the ICN upgrade, when are we going to see a difference on that?
We've already, that's in, that's in place, that happened over winter break, so we actually went from 40 emails of this what we were on up to 100, we now have 100 emails for the ICN, maybe we can figure it out for us if that runs up to winter break.
High schools should see a difference, that's for sure.
What does that mean for the ICN to be, have those extra mails, it's going to be a better connection?
That's where our bandwidth, that's where.
It increases our bandwidth, we're able to go to sites and not everybody's competing for that.
And the high schools was where, you know, we'd get so many people in such a large place trying to work on that, and even though we found a 40, it really wasn't enough based on the amount of technology and network, so our medical data's a long, it'll take us longer.
Maybe it's a long deal.
It isn't that room.
Oh, it's not?
It's, it isn't just that room, it comes in through the ICN, that's where the, that's where the cable comes in, but basically it serves the whole building and serves.
Some of the districts around here actually get their bandwidth through the ICN but through AA, where we are on our own, so we don't go to the AA. And I think like places like Clear Lake, they don't use it because they have CL, so I mean, sometimes it's a local company that allows that.
Is there any other correspondence? I do have something from IASB, our representative here for District Number Two has decided not to run for reappointment, and they are looking for individuals interested in serving as the IASB board member from District Two, this will be appointment, an 11-month appointment, serving through November of 2012, at which on the next election would come to be, so if anyone has a desire to be a board member for IASB for our district up here, let me know and I will forward that on to others.
She decided she did not run for reelection, so.
And that's all I have. And I don't believe we have a report from any student senate representative?
Well, thank you for approving the lead conference, we're excited to be going to that. One thing that's very different that Student Senate is currently plowing the way on, and when I say plowing, they are plowing, is with the help of the PTO, we are holding for the first time in probably 10 years, a winter dance at the end of February, it will be at Lincoln, my understanding is, and this is an interesting switch for us because winter dances were canceled because they were not attended at all, but there's been a long time cry for them. The difference is, we used to have, we would always have one team away, so if girls were home, boys were gone, boys were gone, if girls were home, and so now that we have boys and girls playing home, we can see how it goes. So that is coming up at the end of February, and the kids decided that if we were going to have a dance, we should bulk it up a little bit, so they're going to do a little mini spirit week that week, it's a four-day week, I believe, and so they're planning various activities, their big thing that they're working on is a game that can be played in the hallways, like some kind of a hunt or something like this, that kids can do, class competition in between, you're just loving this, Mr. Warren, I know. So they're working on that, we're working on, soon we will be sending our applications in for the student leadership camp again this summer, the kids are looking forward to that, and we're also, and I'm not sure if we're going to pull this off this year or not, but there are many at the state level that are looking forward to us doing this, we're going to try and pull off a leadership camp or day right here in Mason City. Northeast Iowa is kind of dead when it comes to leadership days, and a lot, really the rest of the state all does them, they pull together people from all around the state, Northeast Iowa does not, and so there's a lot of people looking at Mason City right now that were on the board saying, hey, you guys can do it now, so we're looking at bringing somebody up from the Hall of Pride to do some training session and inviting people in from around the North Iowa area to bring in their student leaders before the end of the year. But it's a jam-packed year because we also need to do an exchange and, but I'm hoping if we run the leadership conference, we can call that an exchange too. So, yeah.
What do you have a week with this leadership conference take place on?
This is the problem, is we have to find a day in the schedule, originally I thought we had, before spring break, I was thinking that we had a half-day and I was going to try and do it on a half-day, and I may still try and do it on a half-day yet this year. I haven't, we haven't gotten to looking at the calendar yet because of this dance coming up, but that'll be next on our priority if we're going to pull it off. Did you have a suggestion?
I'm going to play the curmudgeon on this one. We have a certain number of days of school, people have talked about increasing the number of days of school, however, and I don't care what you do, any type of thing where you're going to go four days and play a game in the hallways or whatever, is another four days of instruction that can potentially be lost.
Right.
Okay, we can poo-poo that, so I'm not terribly, and then plus another day, and you're taking kids out that also add to the classroom, and they add in terms of other children's learning, I'm willing to go with it, but I'm going to, I'm also going to exercise some judgment as a board member in that we come up March with, February, March with all of the tournaments that we've got and the kids that will want to go to tournaments, plus the kids that will want to go to spring break, we don't need more days of school, we need kids in school more days.
I don't disagree with you, and that's why nothing is set in stone.
Okay.
And the kids that we would be pulling out, it would not be, and I'm sorry if I didn't clarify that, we would not be pulling our entire senate out for that leadership camp, we would be pulling a few officers and we would be pulling in officers from the other because we don't need our whole senate to go to that, we just need to host it. Also, the, and what the kids are planning is not activities that are going to take away the whole day kind of thing, we're not planning another homecoming, it's just a dress-up days and this activity thing is, you know, like at homecoming we did, find the coins in the classroom kind of thing. However, and I don't care what you do, any type of thing where you're gonna go four days and play a game in the hallways or whatever, is another four days of instruction that can potentially be lost.
Right.
Okay, we can poo-poo that. So, I'm not terribly, and then plus another day, and you're, you're taking kids out and also add to the classroom, and they add in terms of other children's learning. I'm willing to go with it. But I'm gonna, I'm also going to exercise some judgment as a Board Member in that we come up March with, February, March, with all of the tournaments that we've got and the kids that will wanna go to tournaments, plus the kids that will wanna go to spring break. We don't need more days of school. We need kids in school more days.
I don't disagree with you, and that's why nothing is set in stone.
Okay.
And the kids that we would be pulling out, it would not be, and I'm sorry if I didn't clarify that, we would not be pulling our entire senate out for that leadership camp. We would be pulling a few officers and we would be pulling in officers from the other because we don't need our whole senate to go to that. We just need to host it. Also, the, and what the kids are planning is not activities that are gonna take away the whole day kind of thing. We're not planning another homecoming. It's just a dress-up days and this activity thing is, you know, like at homecoming, we did find the coins in the classroom kind of thing. Something that kids can do before and after school and during passing times.
Hey, that, that'll be great. Rest your shirt, I'll be out there.
I will count you in for a judge.
Boy, you can do that.
Can I put you down for a chaperone?
No. I paid my dues in the afternoon, you were still in high school. Thank you for that, real quick. Next up, information items. Number eighty-six, eighty-eight is student and staff recognition.
Thank you, Tim. And I, we have a number that we'd like to recognize. First of all, placed in the first Words Master Competition held in the elementary schools are these young people, and we congratulate them for being pioneers as we, this is the first opportunity they've had to do that. Finalists in the first ever Lincoln Intermediate Geography B were Hunter Anderson, Alec Brown, Whitney Cummings, Tanner Jones, Bo LaPointe, Elise Obermeyer, Jayden Smith, Saib Suhab, Kelsey Waswick, Waswick, and Haley Westendorf. And Saib Suhab actually placed first in that Geography B and qualifies to take the written test to compete in the, to compete, to be eligible to participate in State Geography B. That's going to be held on March 30th.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just a second? I'm curious, can you tell us what this Word Master thing is? Mike, maybe?
It's coordinated through our talent development program, and it had to do with kids being introduced to new vocabulary. They, they have this long list of words to kind of study, and they take some kind of vocabulary tests, you know.
Okay.
Trying to expand vocabulary.
Didn't know what it was.
Good question. Nathan Jansen, Nathaniel Jansen, sorry, placed first in John Adams Middle School, seventh grade, Geography B. Participated in Northeast Iowa String Teachers Association honors orchestra in Cedar Rapids were Meredith Armstrong, Tyler Beamer, Koolen Boyle, Elliot Craw, Kalidie Dowd, John Hanson, Rebecca Harkin, Madeline Kim, Sydney Cleveland, Emily.
I don't know.
Not at all.
I don't know.
And here she go off, I guess. Haley Phillips. Selecting Mason City High School Student of the Month for November are those young men and women listed there by departments. As Mike, Mr. Pensa shared with you last month, there was a Rock and Prevention Assembly that was held at Harding on December 2nd, and these high school students were the ones that Mr. Pensa shared that came to help and assist, some of them being Harding students during their elementary years. And so, we thank those young high school people for going and helping. Raised, John Adams' seven students raised one thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty cents for the Cheer Fund. And we had it that, some adults that assisted with our Lincoln Intermediate Geography B and Rosie Ryan, who was a, is a retired teacher, longtime teacher at Harding, was a moderator. And we, other adults have assisted with Julie Kim, Chris Loon, and Gail Smith. She was at Harding a long time.
Still remember the book, too.
Very good. Thank you very much. Item eighty-nine is the annual facilities report.
He took them by surprise there. Sorry, all right. How far I should get, hard to copy that there, please. Our maintenance, facility maintenance and operation plan has evolved a lot this year, a tremendous amount. We, we've had some grants that we've submitted to the Chevy Ready Grants, the State Energy Grants. So, almost monthly, I've had to get into this thing and update it so it's current for these grant applications. So, it's really active right now. And that's kind of exciting, but I just, I'm gonna place through this really quick because there's been a lot of changes this year just from our construction. Twenty-year roof review. We have a repair uptick right now in our Senior High gym roof in Hoover, but that's just due because our John Adams roofs, our Madison roof that we've done some extensive work through this summer are all being replaced. Senior High, John Adams, major work out there. So, that part of the list will shrink somewhat this year. Tuck pointing and waterproofing, there's another high point for us where the Senior High and John Adams is gonna have extensive tuck pointing this year. John Adams has already undergone a complete renovation on the exterior from the ground to the roof line, and next year, Senior High will have the same on the two-story section. So, that will get caught up for us. Those should come off the list. Window door replacements, there's another home run for us with our projects. We're really hitting everything right, right down the middle with our John Adams and Senior High. All of the windows and door replacements in the two-stories and the John Adams is really gonna shrink that meat down for us, too. So, that part of the list will be taken care of. Our annual boiler maintenance and drain inspection for summertime. Boilers at the end of their expected life cycle include John Adams boilers number one and two. Well, they're gone, so that's gonna change on the list here real soon, too, but I left it on there this time so you could see that. Senior High boiler number two and a small Senior High water heater boiler has been taken out of service because it just plain died this summer. It's really, it is repairable, but it's gonna cost a lot of dollars, so we're looking at other avenues with our Phase Five plan coming down the pipe to help make hot water at that part of the high school during the summertime. Normally, we use our large boiler to make our hot water. Our lubrication schedules are gonna change as our equipment becomes newer. We see a lot of equipment out there that does not need hand lubrication like they did back in the old days. Well, we actually specified more of that in our penthouse because that way we have better control with our new equipment coming online, so we can get in there and we know that the equipment is lubricated and operating properly versus equipment that's newer and we have no control of that because it's sealed and you can't service it. So, we actually specified then some of our penthouse equipment. So, we're looking forward to that. The, dropping down to the electrical, we have new lights going in. If you look at John Adams, new fifty, fifty-seven percent converted to efficient lighting, that's gonna be a hundred percent going soon, so that will change. Senior High, seventy percent, that's gonna be closer to ninety percent after a two-story renovation. So, those numbers are going to improve. We also have recently just been approved for new gym lights in all three of our elementary buildings with grant monies that we were awarded, and that's gonna be going in pretty much as we speak, right, Mike? We're, we're gonna work very hard to pad in. We have till March 1st to have that in for that, but we're gonna have brand-new lighting in all of our elementary gyms here very soon. Phase One, new and older transformer vaults, once again from the electrical section. The old transformer vaults in the basement of the Senior High are gone. During our Phase One renovation, all of those were removed, and we have one transformer pad in the courtyard area. One. It's above ground, it's not gonna get water, so we're really excited about that. I don't have to worry about three- and four-inch rainstorms overnight anymore. I can slip through that. Electrical, central battery units. All of our buildings have the small battery packs on the walls. They're small and they're white, and they have two little lights on so that when the power goes out, those lights go on. There's hundreds of batteries district-wide, and it's a real chore to keep these changed out. But with our new renovation, we're going to go to central battery units, like we have at the Roosevelt Building and at Lincoln Building. And that helps us a lot with our maintenance plan where we have one central battery unit that operates all of the lights in the building. So, that's gonna be a cost savings for us also. So, we're excited about that. Elevators, chairlifts, stairlifts. We have two that are going to disappear. One at John Adams and two at the Senior High. Actually, one has already left at the Senior High. We're gonna have two chairlifts. They're old, gerrymans, stairwell chairlifts, and they're pretty much obsolete. We can no longer get parts for them. Right now, we're very much on borrowed time. They're safe to operate, but the circuitry, the circuit cords in there are obsolete. We can no longer replace them. So, we have to cross our fingers we won't get any lightning hits here in the next six months. Those will be gone. Our tarazol flooring resurfacing. I'm real excited about our new floors at the Senior High. We're going to an epoxy tarazol product that we never applied before, but it's being used in schools, in municipalities across the state, and with good luck. And we are having, we're going to put down a mineral-based sealer on this tarazol because we're gaining approximately thirteen thousand square feet of flooring that we didn't have before. And it takes a lot of manpower to coat and re-scrip, strip and recoat that every three years to make it look the way it should. So, we are using a mineral-based sealer with this new flooring system along with our regrind that we're gonna do in John Adams Building on the old tarazol. And mineral-based sealer penetrates the substrate deeper into the substrate, like oil on your driveway. You park your car and you get a drop of oil, you notice the spot this big around, it comes this big around over a few days. It has that same effect, and it gets in and does a better job of sealing our flooring. So, we don't have to go back in two years, three years, four years and completely re-scrip the thing out and start over with the old water, oil, metal and alloy components that we use now on some of our floors. So, we're gonna slowly get away from that and go to the new stuff, and we'll see how that works out for us. Plumbing and repair. We did a new grease interceptor at the Senior High. We had a lot of trouble with grease plugging our four-inch main water line in the Senior High kitchen since the day I started and probably ten years before that. And when we removed the plumbing out of the ground, it was evident that we had problems, and that's all gonna be corrected now. We're gonna have a new fifteen-hundred gallon grease interceptor installed at Senior High by code, which will eliminate that issue. We would have to unplug this thing monthly, especially during the winter months for some reason, when the ground got cold. So, hopefully that problem's been eliminated. We did have a removal in our flooring ACB, ACBM section there where we had flooring removal at John Adams. We had thirty-nine thousand nine hundred square feet that we abated for the two-story project at John Adams. The Senior High is gonna require approximately thirty-four thousand, but that's really gonna clean up our books for our Espersis and pending materials in the district that we have to inspect every three years and help us with that whole building. John Adams is gonna have a clean slate and will come clear off the books, I believe, once we have our follow-up inspections after the construction project. So, that's exciting for me because that frees me up just a little more. That's about it. And like I say, this thing has really been evolving just in the last few months to get out the grant approvals, the move, apply for grants, state, there's a component that they insist on, and we have ready for them to improve. Hard cottons of yours, Steve? If you have any questions, you can.
One, very quickly, if you go back to the first page where you talked about window door replacements occurring because of construction, now will this change us as far as keen and building security?
Yes. On the interior?
Yeah.
Not as much on the interior as what it would be on the exterior. Our outside doors, we're gonna stay with keycard access. All of the doors we blanked out this last few years, so we get keycard access. As far as the interior building goes, the keys will stay about the same. However, the doors will be more secure.
Okay.
And you, I'm sure, did you have a room that had a door that was starting to get kinda wobbly?
I had one, a little room I had a window in, it was just really great. Upstairs?
Upstairs, north side.
Yep.
So.
No, it, you know, it's an older building. You know, you're gonna have those issues, and that'll be really good.
The two-story will open soon, all new hard doors and hard doors.
Facing the right way.
Facing the right way this time.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
I just, I've, I've integrated gathering pictures and getting this one that we continue to put up more and more color point presentations on the website, this is the construction, so you can kind of see it. And we're leaving them all there from the very start to kind of where they are. So, he used to give us way more pictures than we can probably put up there, but he's documenting everything as we go through there, which I appreciate.
We've got over five hundred pictures.
Yeah.
Have you noticed that we, we, we probably get some, I don't know if people can see that?
Actually, we could probably find out from CGA. They could probably give us that information as well. If you work with us on the website, we're gonna be, this information.
Thank you so much. Last item is board policy update first reading for BPM fifty. Board policy seven to five point one purchasing, bidding a new board policy regulation, seven oh four dot two oh one, post issuance compliance regulations. There's some revision in that also, so this is the first reading. Any questions and comments on this before we move ahead?
It's just seeing the bidding from twenty-five thousand to forty-eight thousand without prior board approval, and then a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And it's a state recommendation?
Correct.
Wow.
Yeah.
Can you give me a explanation why it went from twenty-five to forty?
Maybe the one to fifteen is gonna require a board approval. And then the one on the bonds, that's just because of the new act that the bonds, that QSCPs have really forced the issue on, and what we have to do, and this is basically why you wanna have to really maintain our bonds.
All right. That concludes our informational sections. Next up, administrative reports, elementary ed reports.
Just a couple items. We have a professional development day on January 3rd, right before the afternoon of break. And then also this Friday for the elementaries is a professional development day, kind of opposite the end of semester, grade card time at the secondary mall. We've used that time to get grade levels and teachers together. We've been inputting our curriculum into Curriculum Manager and we're linking it to the Iowa Core. We've had opportunities to, this Friday we'll be training teachers about administering the DRA two reading assessment and talking also about a rollout of using the Iowa Writing Assessment in April at grades two through six. So, just good opportunities to get teachers together and talk about assessments and data and curriculum, and then also opportunities for them to work in their data teams. And then after break, it was kind of nice to have just those couple of days with kids, a perfect opportunity for getting them back into that school routine, reteaching our expectations. And elementary kids are ready to come back and be excited, and then it seems like, you know, we're right in the middle of a trimester, so we're just kind of really geared up and just keep going. So, staff and students are ready to come back. Early indications about the four-year-old preschool program from the legislators, sounds like it was kind of hands-off on that after a lot of debate last year and kind of keeping everybody up in the air for a lot of time. Sounds like we really don't expect any changes. So, we've had our initial registration in early December, and we continue to advertise. We've got about twenty spots out there still open, so if you're here, some are just looking for preschool for next year. We're still taking names. And then, you know, it's January, so it's like the end of the year's kind of downhill. And so, we start talking about how we're gonna transition fourth graders to Lincoln next year. We've been working with Tom Novatny about scheduling when administrator and counselors will come meet with fourth grade students, when we're gonna take the fourth grade students to Lincoln, the tour. Tom's planning the almost fifth grade night in April. So, just, you know, kindergarten round of it, just is amazing that you just start all that planning for next school year already. So, that's kind of what I have right now.
Very good. Thank you. Secondary report.
Well, as Mike pointed out, this is a busy week for us at the secondary level. And so, we'll be starting second semester on Monday, which is hopefully, hopefully the same day we can move into the new cafeteria and kitchen. Fingers crossed. But this week, we're winding things up, and I just want to point out, I couldn't be happier from everything going on from seven, eight, and the high school. We've made some big improvements, whether that's discipline or grade-based at each of the different levels. The seventh grade had some outstanding data at the end of the first quarter pertaining to student kind of grades and discipline. And Mr. Siglin at the eighth grade has also seen their data go up. So, we're quite happy. We've all had our share of things go on at the building level, but overall, I would say everything's going outstanding, seven, twelve, from what we can tell right now. We hope our semester data here at the end is the same. Talking a little bit about data, kind of helps me transition into a grade policy pilot that I want to inform you of. As you're aware, at the high school level especially, by July 1, we have to align our curriculum to the Iowa Core. We've been working on aligning that curriculum for the last two years, and we're getting very, very close to that. As we've learned more about the Iowa Core, we've learned more about the philosophy behind the Iowa Core. The way Iowa Core is developed, there's a specific focus on essential concepts, skills and competencies, which is a little bit different than what we have had at the secondary level, even state or nationally. It's usually very content-driven. So, we're looking at a little shift. Part of that shift is... Part of that shift is developing lessons around those skills, competencies and concepts. The other part of the Iowa Core that actually hasn't been talked about as much is the characteristics of effective instruction. Two years ago, we gave to the teachers, I shouldn't say we, the district office gave to teachers a bookmark with all those characteristics on there. There's two main characteristics that we've had to work on as, along with aligning curriculum. That's teaching for understanding and that's formative assessment. Last year at the secondary level, we worked on teaching for understanding by doing a book study called Gradual Release of Responsibility. This year as a district, we've started working on formative assessment and we plan to continue working on that. Both of those ideas, basically philosophy, goes to that practice. Formative assessment should not go into the grade book or the overall grade. We're preparing kids for academic assessments, basically. We knew coming off last year that we were going to be on a collision course with not our grading policy at the district, but the regulations. If the state is pushing those characteristics of effective instruction, then we were going to have to really look and analyze our current grading practices. And when I say that, really focus on academic and productivity. And so we put together a committee of teachers at the high school level and we started to research and go through different researchers. You have the book that actually our committee read through, Repair Kit, the fifteen fixes to broken grades. And the timing, the great timing that came out was this magazine, which we had extras, so I actually provided each one of you. I wanted you to see what the committee and every high school teacher received this magazine as well. And it has almost all the major education researchers or the foremost education researchers when it comes to learning, grading, instruction in here. And there's some great articles that summarize their research. One thing that we discovered in, well, let me go back. This committee, we debated a lot of topics. It was one of the most exciting committees I've ever been on because everybody had different ideas and views and we all went back to the research and nothing left the committee unless it was consensus. And we had representatives from every department in the high school. And so we debated, actually, we've been debating over the last three months. And we really decided that we needed to focus on what every researcher agreed upon. They all stated this one major thing and that was you should not include behaviors, practice, following classroom rules into the overall grade. If you really wanted to have a grade that promoted learning or communicated, I shouldn't say promoted necessarily, but communicated learning, then it had to be academic assessment focused. So we decided to take that information and we thought we'd head down that direction. Before we kind of finalized anything, we sent out a survey to the teachers and received information back. And then we sent out a survey to the parents and we had about a hundred and fifty-eight parents give us information. And actually, it was right in line with what the teachers were saying. Basically, the first question related to, it was a yes, no survey. And then the amount of time people put in comments was amazing. And I've read every single comment. Some put paragraphs. I think one person had three paragraphs in one question. But it really talked about, the first question was, a grade should be learning outcome-based. You know, that was one of them. And that's really what we're talking about. We want to make our grade learning outcome-based. We already have a standardized report card, but we also have the overall grade on one side. That's still going to remain in what we propose on doing. One of the other things I've included before I tell you exactly what we're going to do is a rough draft of a letter I'm going to give to parents. And then also kind of more specific on what the teachers will put into their syllabus of the teachers doing the pilot. We're not going to do the pilot building-wide. We're just looking at collecting data and trying to see, did this improve student learning? Did this improve grades? Did this improve the accuracy of grades? And did it improve the communication of where students are when it comes to their intellectual knowledge and understanding of our key concepts, skills, competencies? Basically, the social studies department, the science department, Ms. Foley's geometry class, Ms. Peterson's college writing class, and Ms. Cadena, and we believe it's going to be her Spanish two class, will pilot that the grade, the overall grade, the grade that counts to the GPA will simply be the academic grade. When I say academic grade, quizzes, tests, projects, speeches, and science could be labs, that kind of thing. And the idea that we have to work with students to prepare students. And that goes back to the teach for understanding of, and kind of in teacher terms, a focused lesson, guided practice, possibly student collaboration, and then an independent task. That independent task may be an academic assignment, but it may also be where we put a formative assessment. And the teacher makes that decision, so they're collecting data. The productivity part will be feedback basically to the student and the teacher of where the student or how the student is progressing through that unit or that information. It would also help the teacher make instructional decision-making. Basically, when we're looking at the AD twenty, we'll basically look at the academic grade being a hundred percent of the overall grade. Therefore, it's strictly, this is where the kid's learning is at that given time and then, oh, you know, by the end of the year. So we're kind of working through that right now. Wanted you to have the information ahead of time. Wanted you to have kind of the information that the teachers received as well. And, you know, we'll actually meet probably at the mid-quarter and then the end of the quarter to talk with those teachers piloting this, to get feedback from them as well. The only other thing that we added in, which is kind of funny, this book, so basically fix number one is what our main part of our pilot is. We also added in, because there's a trickle-down effect with grades, there are so many layers. It's like an onion. You just keep peeling it off. We actually decided to include in this pilot that students handing in academic assignments outside of class would not be docked, points off for handing it in late. We believe this is going to be few and far between. The reason I feel that way is because we had three teachers that were already doing this, kind of in the building. And so it was a very small amount of students that handed something in late. Plus, if it's out of class, most academic assignments are occurring in class, so we're going to try that. And we have a deadline at the end of the grading period, like the end of the third quarter. They have to hand it in within a week that they can't hand, but the week before. So that way the teacher has time to grade it and get it back, that kind of thing. Because if we're giving an academic assignment, it's important for us to know if the student's proficient on that academic assignment or not. And handing it in late is a behavior. There's other things we can do to encourage that kid, teach that kid that it's important to hand in things on time, be to class on time. We already have things built in to our system to try to do that. I'll also say, a lot of times the students that are not doing that, doing something punitive or negative consequences don't necessarily change their behavior from what we found. So grading policy pilot, wanted to give you also the opportunity to ask any questions you had, kind of where we were with this pilot.
Do we see maybe the reporting, report cards changing a little bit as far as I'm thinking on a specific subject? You have the skills listed below there and will those maybe change to align with what the PE requirements and standards are of the Iowa Core?
Actually, I can't speak. I wish Kathy was here. Because we've been talking quite a bit that some of our state, our standards, we may need to tweak or alter and basically match the Iowa Core. So that way we're communicating that the student is at this level according to the Iowa Core, they're proficient. I will say the productivity point, part of work quality and work habits can still be kept. It just won't go towards the overall grade, but it'll show up on the standard side of the grade. So that way feedback is still being shown to parents in that aspect. For instance, if I'm a teacher and a kid's continually handing in homework late, now that I'm not giving points to my overall grade, that will impact, or it should impact, how the student does on that academic assignment. And so if a parent's asking me, well, why isn't my kid doing well, that might be something I share. They're not keeping up with the class or they're constantly behind and so they may not be on the same pace that we are. And that may be a fix that we need. I'm quite interested to see how this pilot goes just because it is a change in how we do business when it comes to grade. So far, the teachers that have tried it this first semester have had great success with it and have actually kind of been pushing the committee and the teachers piloting and actually are kind of the cheerleaders for, we need to look at this and really try to, and it's a culture change, move away from the focus on grades to focus on student learning. So that's what we're hoping will happen.
The other part of this TJ, I think that's important for everybody to know too, is that with assessment for learning and formative assessment, there might not always be something in our school.
Right.
Every day. And I think that that's an issue that, that's again, a culture shift, a paradigm shift for families and for kids. Because having been a music teacher where you did formative assessment every minute of the day while you're having somebody sing or play an instrument for you and it's just part of what you do. As teachers in the general classroom are using that data to improve student learning and improve student performance, there may not be, there probably won't be anything in there, a grade for that day or a grade for that particular practice session. It might have something else there which we are not there yet in our school in terms of what we would put there.
Yep. And really it's feedback to the student, feedback to the staff member. If we give that feedback, that's the most important part of improving. I will tell you, because you all have this, at the secondary level with this, by adding in fix one and fix two and if, hopefully it goes well, that we would be through the first six fixes in our daily practice. Fix seven would be the standard, straight, standard-based grade, not having the overall grade. Problem with Iowa and Carnegie units and second, or post-secondary is you have to have grades and you have to have a GPA to get into college. So we may not fully get there until the state does something about it. I did send, I shouldn't say I, we sent some staff members to competency-based grading conference that the department event put on, which filled up within twenty-four hours.
They would only allow four people from every district to go.
So we sent some people to that. And the reason why, bring information back. If the state is going to push this, which is probably to this extreme and we may be in the middle, that we wanted to take steps to prepare for that if that comes.
And we did apply for the waiver and it was, and it's in the double orders test.
Right.
So we do have that in case there's a course where we would like to have it be competence-based as opposed to seat type. So it allows for a little more flexibility within the environment. Doesn't mean everything has to go there in that direction, but does mean that you have some flexibility to create some for students and course for first students that would allow for that, which makes some sense to me.
And competency-based grading was in the governor's education reform plan as well. So that's why we want to be knowledgeable. In case the state heads that way, we want to make sure we're close to take a step instead of taking a huge leap. So that's the grading policy pilot that we're doing. Now the fun information, I've been waiting all day to share with you. Over here on the left is basically our color palette and our, your right, my left, would be the carpet and color palette from the interior design. Yes, from RDG. Basically, this right here, and Ramon may have to help me on one part of it, but this is the classroom carpet for John Adams that was picked out. Thank you. So that's the John Adams classroom. This is the John Adams office and cafeteria, kitchen, offices. That's already down, so when we go through on the thirtieth or if you come earlier, you'll see that. The big thing. The big theme is actually, we really wanted to go with school colors. And so they tried to tie that in, but they also wanted to get in some accent colors, which I don't know a whole lot about. Dirt, yes, we talked about.
These will all be squares so that they can pop off.
Yeah. These will all be squared so that way if a piece gets ruined, similar to what's at Lincoln, that we can pull up one. This is the high school classrooms.
Don't we say classroom, are you talking all classrooms are going to be carpeted?
Except for the science.
Science, dent, consumer end may not be as.
Right.
Is that just a two-story?
Right.
Oh, so it's not my room.
Not when we come back, no. The IC at the high school is similar colors as this. The word they use, it's more organic, which I said, what does that mean? And they said it's just a pattern, basically like diagonal lines and it's not the straight pattern. Under the, what I would call the skylights, which is probably not the right term for it, this black carpet would kind of go with it and be underneath the skylights. And they said underneath some of the computer room, there'd be a pattern kind of of the all-black.
TJ, and then Jason said today that it's going to be a quarter turn is how it's going to be.
This one?
Uh-huh.
Okay, good. Because we asked that question Friday. Was it clockwise or counterclockwise? This board, which, you should probably come up this way for you. Some of the pieces. Yes. I'll start over here. This is actually one of the countertops in the John Adams office. This is any of the woodwork, cabinetry in classrooms. Actually, you can even already see it in the serving area in the cafeteria. These two pieces right here are to cover things in classrooms, offices, for instance, window seal. Depending on the room, they have one of these furnace, there's one of those floor furnaces. This may be on top of, of it to kind of protect it and use it as a shelf. This is another countertop type area. Classroom, classroom colors is this. The rest of these are accent colors in different areas of the building. The red, the only place that is would be in the serving area in the kitchens. There's one that's about a three to four foot span at the back of the serving area is that red. This is actually the cork board for the classrooms and they use it as an accent color. Some of the rooms will have cabinetry at the top and then maybe some floor cabinetry. This cork board would be right in between them to kind of highlight the wood. This gray here is.
It's an upholstery.
Yes, it's a sound barrier and it goes in the hallway connecting John Adams and the high school. It's on the interior wall. On the other side of that wall is the high school cafeteria. And actually, they started putting up some adhesive today for that. This, yes, it's a red or tomato red.
It's a Mohawk red. Yeah, it goes in the cafeteria.
Actually, it goes in the, on the John Adams cafeteria. It's another sound barrier. And it's high and not a lot of people will be able to touch it. No one will be able to touch it. On the other side of that wall is the bands. So it's the north wall of the cafeteria that this will go up.
Actually, it goes around.
Round, oh, around the top, okay. I just remembered the bands. This gray is, if you touched it, very tough, very strong. And so that's why they picked that material because people could touch it. It's easy to clean, handprints, fingerprints. I'll start over here. This is, these area, that one falls, is for the bathrooms and actually the cafeteria, the kitchen bathrooms already has this. We didn't need that.
That's a countertop.
Yeah, that's a countertop. The floor tile, walls tile, accent wall color. And it's, like I said, in the bathrooms of the kitchen now and it looks very sharp. And it's, like I said, in the bathrooms of the kitchen now, and it looks very sharp, and that's the countertop. This is the area, Ramon, I need you to help look, I was thinking this was the tile for the FCS and science rooms. And actually, the FCS room is pretty much finished at John Adams, it's right off the dining, so you can see, this is more of that commercial vinyl flooring, and so they have a little design in there. And you can also see a lot of this woodwork.
It's real.
It's nice, it's, it pops, actually, when you come in, it's very inviting. Yeah. That pop floor I stole from HGTV. Down here is all terrazzo floor. The easy one is this one, that's the hallway connecting John Adams and the high school, and it touches the old John Adams terrazzo hallway floor and the old high school hallway. And they were actually working on finishing, or starting to finish that connection today. This black color and red are the main colors of the terrazzo in both cafeterias. The accent color is different, depending on which cafeteria you go to. The John Adams is an orange accent, it's, I believe, two rows, two stripes going down it, and then one going across, that's the orange. The yellow is the same type pattern, but it's in the high school dining. And I wish we had a picture, because if you saw the John Adams, you'd see exactly what the high school side's going to look like, but with the yellow. And so that's the terrazzo that is going to go in. So that's kind of the colors.
So TJ, I think a big thank you to just show them some of the furniture that you looked at. And this will not be your normal cafeteria, they have a presentation from this company last week, talks about some mixture of booths, round tables, long tables, much more like a floor court would be, some tall, possibly some tall areas, that's still up in the air, we have to get a bit stronger, but this kind of gives you an idea of what it could look like. As you go through that hallway, there's one place where there's pillars, they actually could put a booth between the pillars, there's all kinds of really wonderful things that could happen. We did, we thought up that we can replace our, some of our tables are fine, and we'll use some of those, but they have blue seats, which doesn't make any sense to me at all. But we can get new seats, and have them be black, which will, you know, then blend, just by, and we've got some new brown tables that we think will also work. So we've got some things that we can maintain and keep, and just to refurbish a little bit, and then do some kind of fun stuff so that it really feels like something very special. And the lights are awesome in John, I love the lights in the dining area.
Are we going to use cafeteria for study hall in that?
Yes, they will.
Correct.
It is so warm and inviting, I mean, the lights, the terrazzo, the colors, just.
The kids will all want to study there.
They will, they'll want to be there, they'll want to study there. And there's Wi-Fi in there, and they can have study groups in the booths, I mean, there's all kinds of opportunities to do some things that are very different.
Another place, and really, there's two or three periods that our study hall's big enough, we don't have a place to fit them, although that may change with the FEMA room and what we decide to do with the FEMA room, because that would be big enough, and depending on our furniture and how we move forward with the FEMA room. And just a construction update, and then I'll be completely finished. The FEMA room is on schedule as of right now. The pre-cast went to fabrication, it goes this week, so it'll be the end of February, early March, that you may start to see some walls go up. Some of that depends on weather. Hinkle on the John Adams side is on schedule, as Scott pointed, mentioned. They're really hammering, not literally hammering, but focused on the John Adams bandroom. They just poured the foundation and finished that in the bandroom last week, and they're starting to work on the ceiling. The reason they're pressing there so much is because of the shift, March 12th, our band and chorus department and orchestra have to flip over to the John Adams cafeteria. So that's why Hinkle is focused on having that area ready for us. The last thing, if you're by the high school, you may see a trench going on around the outside of the, of the, of the band music area. And we're not working on castles or anything like that, or a moat, there'll be.
We're going to put a radiator in it.
Geo, yeah, yeah, right there, right next to the belly.
Right next to the belly.
Yes. Yes. That's actually for a new brick wall, they, they're pouring concrete at the bottom of it, and then building a new brick wall that won't be far off the old brick wall, and insulation will go there for energy efficiency.
I think we should tell the kids what we're renaming ourselves, the Alligators, and that we're going to put alligator mascots in there. The other part of that is that the people, the Jam's two-story is where we have the set, which is coming through March first, so there's also happening.
Right.
I'm wanting to have to push the venting.
Is it all windows or anything?
Almost, there's, we had to, they had to.
There's just a few missing.
Yeah. They had to send some, because the color was a little off, so they sent them to have them redo them to go up, to match. Yeah.
Do you think we could, is there, are things that, on the 30th, we could, after our meeting?
Well, we can do a whole tour.
We could walk through those structures?
Sure, yeah, we can, sure, we can go all the way into John Adams.
Yeah, yeah.
And they moved all of the, all of the food that we've had in cold storage over winter break into the freezer in the kitchen, and so. It is packed, it is packed, jam-packed, but, but we no longer have cold storage rental fees, which is also good.
It's a lot of chicken nuggets.
Maybe not, but cold storage will be good for us.
Very exciting stuff.
He said it's a lot of chicken nuggets.
And special end update, Eric?
Our focus is getting ready for the site visit, keeping things in line for that, leaving that, nothing to report.
We don't have any glamorous course watches.
Nothing's going to get lonely.
We did think we would update you about a training we've been offering, primarily special education teachers and parents, but also administrators, a mix of some general ed staff as well, and that's the Crisis Prevention Intervention Training, CPI. We've had two of our district teachers be trained as facilitators of this, and that's Vicki Davis and Harding and Cheryl Tejens from Lincoln. And then we've been able to use them to offer training to the rest of our staff. Basically, it's a training that really works on de-escalation strategies when we're dealing with problem behavior. And so we have skilled people on our staff, and we've been able, it is kind of an annual certification for our staff, so we offered it in the fall, many of our staff who've been training in the past were recertified. We're offering it again this Friday for, you know, like some of the new paros we've hired, and new staff that have been added this year, and then other people who were not available in the fall, so we're offering the training again this Friday. So just an update there.
And we move to superintendent's update.
Okay, we're starting to take a look at 2012, 2013, start looking at numbers and enrollment and budget, so that we'll be ready to bring you some thoughts about that, so we're kind of starting those conversations now. I would tell you that as we have worked through this, one of the things that either TJ or Mike have mentioned, and Kathy is, is going to be on my medical leave here soon, and so, but we have Dave Nagel working with us from the Leadership and Learning Center. You can remember, we have, through our district need of assistance, you have to set aside about 20% of those dollars to provide professional development for staff. And so we contracted with the Leadership and Learning Center to have Dave Nagel come work with our, with every building K-12 on the development of data teams. And he was trained, about 67 people in this, in the fall. Those people have, teachers, administrators have been involved, and then in September he was here. Our teams have been working in every building, I'm very excited, the administrators have been working as, on their professional development around that practice. And Dave is coming back on the 31st, there's a schedule, and Mike and TJ are coordinating that schedule for Dave, and he's at the high secondary the 31st. And then the other two days, Mike.
First and the second. Rotation.
So, yeah, so if you're, you know, I know that some of you may be interested in seeing perhaps a data team at work. The people that he'll be working with are those that feel very confident, or much more confident in the process, because what we're trying to do is build capacity. And what's happening is that the conversations that teachers are able to have around student learning is what's really become very valuable. So a third grade team of teachers, for instance, might be talking about teaching double digits in math, and they discover that it's, when the kids get to double digits, they really don't get it. And they don't know, and they say, okay, it's about number sense. And so they start talking about with their team, well, what do you do? Well, what do you do? Building some strategies, and then they have some common agreements around what they're going to go back and do. They bring their data, and they can identify all of their children by name, in terms of who's proficient, who's highly proficient, who's proficient, who has far to go. And they can range the students out, and then they have been training kids, training teachers, it's really becoming a di, much more dynamic, and it's very, very exciting. We are planning to have, and I'll let you know that we have three people that we have invited to become instructional data team coaches for next year, and those people will be part of that planning for 2012, 2013. We did interviews, and named those, invited those people to take that on for next year, they'll be, they will be having opportunities when Dave is here to actually watch him coach as part of their role, will be coaching their peers, being in the classroom, helping them, modeling for teacher strategies, and really, you know, giving the teachers the kind of support that they need. We had talked about instructional coaches here two years ago, well, three years ago, almost, but then we were hit with all those budgetary constraints, we weren't able to do that. But then in retrospect, you know, I feel like, well, that's, you know, our job is to look out and say, what are the things that we think could help teachers and students and give that instructional support? And then I think, well, we weren't ready. Now we're ready. We really are ready, and it's very exciting. So that's, that's something for 2012, 2013, that will be coming in its own, as of Dave Nagel's leadership. So we have him for this year, he'll be here, then we'll do more cycles of this process. This will be a continual, organic process of learning for our teachers. They bring their data together, they have common agreements, they are developing their professional learning around student achievement. I mean, it's just, it's very exciting. So if you have an interest in watching one, please let me know, and we'll get you scheduled to watch a data team. I'll work with Mike and TJ on that. Dave will be back in June, we are finalizing dates to work with everybody again, so. Legislative advocacy, a couple of things around this topic. First of all, I kind of, one of the things I'll give you is, the Urban Education Network would like us to have a day at the State House, so I've worked for board members to come. I'm working on finding a date, if you are interested in doing that, and I'll throw a couple of dates out there. They had given us this Thursday, which was possible for me, and I was too soon. I will tell you that February 2nd, the AEA 267 superintendents are planning to be at the State House that morning. So if you are interested in going to talk to legislators about advocacy for education, let me know, and I'll give the permission to you. The other thing is, you know, Sharon Sekman is the Division of Education Committee, so we have a nice voice there for education that we all know. What I would show you now, which kind of gets to some legislative advocacy, is, many have you watched, is a really brief video from Jason Glass. The Elementary-Secondary Education Act is up for reauthorization, as you will know, but it's been sort of stalled, so states are asking for waivers, and.
No doubt.
And so Jason Glass has provided this video, and then the information that I'm giving you is about, is about the January 31 time where they're requesting some information sharing from our area. There's also, there's a letter, so if you want to.
Is there a full screen?
That should be full screen, yep. Oh, up, up, in the left square, down, down to the right, right. No, next one, there you go.
I'm Jason Glass, the Director of the Iowa Department of Education. You might remember that Iowa was among the many states to accept the U.S. Department of Education's invitation last year to apply for waiver from the rigid accountability measures in the Federal No Child Left Behind Act. We intend to request a waiver for Iowa in February. In exchange, we're working with key stakeholder groups to design a comprehensive accountability system that benefits the needs of Iowans, and aligns with the long-range priorities for education, and builds on earlier state efforts, such as strong state standards and assessments. This is in no way a retreat from accountability. While No Child Left Behind has advanced some important reforms, it's also widely acknowledged that the landmark education law has created some unrealistic measures in its attempt to hold the nation's public schools accountable for student progress. In Iowa, we still expect our schools to meet high standards, but we need an approach that emphasizes and rewards growth and progress, rather than the current system that blames and shames schools that fall short of student proficiency targets. If our waiver request is approved, the one-size-fits-all accountability system under No Child Left Behind will eventually be replaced with a new Iowa-built system rooted in growth as well as proficiency on student assessments. Successful schools are more than just tests, so we will look to add additional measures, such as parent and staff satisfaction, student engagement, graduation, and attendance rates. Interventions and sanctions for schools that fall short will be determined in Iowa, rather than at the federal level. Iowa's waiver application will provide a comprehensive, consistent plan for education in three key areas. First, the implementation of college and career-ready standards and assessments. Second, new strong systems for accountability and support. And finally, teacher and principal evaluation and support. The new accountability system will shift focus to the schools that show the lowest student achievement growth, as well as those schools that show the greatest gaps in achievement among various subgroups of students, such as children with disabilities or children who are learning English. At the same time, the system will reward high-performing schools with recognition from the state and increased autonomy from state regulation. Finally, the new accountability system will set targets for achievement and growth over time that we want all students to reach. There are many moving parts to this proposed accountability system. It'll take a lot of communication among the key education groups and state policymakers to make it work. You'll hear more from the department early this year about the progress we've made in these efforts. Teams from the department will meet with K-12 education stakeholder groups this month to get more input on the state's waiver request. Department leaders will also hold public meetings across the state in late January and early February to get input from teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders. Check the department's homepage at www.educateIowa.gov for a schedule of the public meetings, as well as written instructions for sending written comments about Iowa's waiver request. You are a critical part of this process. Thank you for your courage and your commitment to the students, students of Iowa. I'm Jason Glass, the Director and Chief Learner of the Iowa Department of Education.
So then I've given you the news release, and then also why Iowa's seeking a waiver, and then the other is a copy of that email that we got from our horn that indicates the times for, at the Third Lake Office, the department developed a ten-hour schedule, 11:00 to 12:45 would be for board members, or there's also a 6:00 to 7:45 PM time on the 31st, that would be for board members, community members, other providers, organizations, so, and invitation to both our PSYAC team members, PTO folks that have been part of that as well, if they would like to attend. Teachers, there's a time from 4:00 to 5:45, and so we'll be working with administrators to identify some teachers who might want to, and give some time to. to identify some teachers who might want to, and give some time to go and weigh in on that. And then also, there's a place for students, and so I'm not really sure, but I'll work with TJ on identifying classes of students who might benefit from being part of that conversation, or might, they might benefit from hearing. We've got some, there's a young man that did his benchmark today, and I missed it because he did it on the governor's blueprint, and I was so excited. He was, he told me the other day at the, at ballgame Friday night, "Doctor Vision, Doctor Vision." So I really, I'm glad to know that students are engaged in what's happening in Iowa around this. And we've gone through the schools in need of assistance process, and the district in need of assistance process, and we've approached it very positively, and we all feel like we're, I think we're, we're positioning ourselves as a district to absolutely meet what he's talking about head-on and be ready for it. I think, I know that there are districts around the state that are not going to be in that position. So I'm really pleased with the drive and how we're planning for the future in Iowa. So that's, that information. So just let Sue know that you're going to go, if you can find your time to work on that date. Site visit, crap. We're working on that. I sent something to Eric Heitz today. You should put this date on your calendar right now. The 21st of February is a Tuesday, I think. That would be the time that the site team would want to meet with the school board. And we gave you the questions to review, so that's what we're planning, will probably be around 5:15 to 6:30. And we'll probably work with the administrators to identify the rest of, well, the department will be involved, but we'll do this schedule. So we'll see if Eric, he had sent me a sample three-day schedule, so I kind of worked on that, and wanted to make sure you had that date.
Could you give me that time again?
Sure. Five, right now it's 5:15 to 6:30, and I don't think that that would change dramatically on the 21st, and that's a Tuesday. I wanted to take some time with you to follow up on the New Tech network conversation or the information that you got when I wasn't here the other night. I had the opportunity to visit with Clearlake, so just some, gather some thoughts from you in terms of your initial, we had the initial thinking, questions and responses, and then I had given you your generated questions and, and the responses that came from the thread. And then gave you a comparison thread between your questions that you asked and the questions that Clearlake asked. So, didn't know, I don't know that you had really much conversation around that, that evening, but are you, what were some initial plots? As you, as you review that, you know, where she said, "Good question," those were, yeah, those were the things we needed to, to talk about, but. I've been working on some of the things that Clearlake pointed out to me, but I want to hear what I have to say, because you might be in a different place. What were the big concerns or ahas, or still things that you said? You know, is it possible for us to do this next year? It's not? What, what would have to be in place and what would us to do that?
I think it, my takeaway was, it's a valuable tool to engage kids that don't engage with the traditional learning system. My worry is, trying to do this too quickly would give an inferior product. So I, I don't think it's doable next year. Perhaps we could incorporate parts of it into our existing curriculum next year, but as far as coming up with a whole new product that quick scares me. We've got so much on our plate right now.
I agree with that. We didn't actually talk about it very much last Monday night, and we really didn't have any more conversation, but I agree with that.
That's why we want you to have time to do that.
I think it is a lot. I think just going on the site visit, I was very impressed with what they are doing at the New Tech schools. Of course, I just helped one school, but it is impressive, and it's impressive to see the students coming up and sharing their projects. I mean, there's no doubt about the fact that this is an impressive project. But I do, I do agree with all, and looking through all the questions that we all came up with over the course of all these meetings and had discussions, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of things to think about, and I don't, I don't think at all we can do it by fall anyway, because it's such a short turnaround. But I'm concerned about the cost of it in comparison with it being targeted to such a small number of students. I'd like to see maybe that kind of money being spent on something that benefits all of our students. I think we have a long way to go with technology, and there's so much we can do with that, and we only have so much money, and the expenses are always greater. I'm concerned about the cost of it.
Michelle, you want to share too, what you and I talked about, the fundraise inside of the private fundraise inside?
Oh, just, you know, we've talked about examples of going out and getting fundraisers and receive money for this, which would make a big huge difference for us if we had that. Going to, going to, you know, area philanthropists or business people who could afford to help us with that, it would take time. I mean, I just know from, I have a budget on my own at work that I have to plan at least a year up ahead, and we're actually being encouraged more towards the three-to-five year plan, we have budgets in advance. So I think to ask somebody to give us a sizable amount of money is gonna take a couple years for them to put in their budget. You know, first you have to ask them, they have to agree, and then for them to put in their budget, we take at least a year or two, depending on their strengths.
I agree with what Tim said too. I think it has a lot of value, and I would like to see someone that could use of it, used in our resisting programs.
One of, one of the things that's gotta be scary on this, as far as the funding goes, we follow the governor at all. We have needs, the county has needs, municipality has needs, and you're gonna talk about property tax relief in the state legislation, particularly for businesses, it's gotta come from somewhere. And I'm afraid we're gonna see in the next couple of years a pretty good bump in property taxes. And yeah, you could take it out over a year, but you've got clientele that's gonna get really, really excited about it. So, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but we better do a pretty doggone good selling job, because they're gonna, they're gonna be faced, we're gonna, if, if it comes to fruition, even part of it comes to fruition, we're gonna be faced with a bigger property tax bump for ourselves. I just, I just can't help but think that a governor's not gonna be willing, and eventually we're gonna talk about an increase in, in gas tax. Whoa. So it's, it's gonna be an interesting timeframe.
In terms of asking the taxpayers for more board interest.
And those taxpayers are also the ones who are going to donate. You know, and they're sitting there and they're going, geez, I already paid X number of dollars in terms of a tax, and, you know, that, that's a tough, that's a tough, it's a tough sell. I would buy into it, yeah.